Welcome, everyone, to the Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, October 27th, 2025, and to call the meeting to order. I apologize for being late. Would everyone join me at the Pledge of Allegiance?
[inaudible]
Thank you. I want to give notice that we did have an executive session on October 17th, virtually, and we had an executive session prior to this meeting, both to discuss real estate and legal matters. We have several presentations tonight. First, we're going to have the Shade Tree Committee telling us about some of their recommendations for maintenance of trees in the right-of-way. Mr. Foster, do you want to start us off, or Mr. Gibbons, or?
Frank.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just an introduction. We have Mr. Gibbons, the Chair of the Shade Tree Commission, but the presentation will be given by Frank Paris, one of the members of Shade Tree. He has always handled our bare-root tree program, so he was an integral part in us developing this recommendation that you're about to see. Mr. Paris?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paris.
Thank you for letting me speak. It's going to be short, I hope, but first I wanted to talk about something that happened a couple of weeks ago, and that is Delaware County did a commission, an assessment of the county's tree canopy for the period 2010 to 2022. Their findings for the whole county-
Could you speak a little more into the mic, either, or give it a tap, make sure it's working?
Yep.
It is. Just so, just sort of bring it over to you and speak louder. They're having trouble hearing you in the back.
Okay, sorry about that. But anyway, Delaware County commissioned an assessment that was conducted by the University of Vermont about the tree cover in Delaware County. Some of their findings were, specifically for Radnor, which I think we can be very, very proud of, is that 50%, 2% of our township is covered by canopy. And this is kind of significant because I personally did a tree canopy study five years ago, and it was 52%. So in the last five years, it appears, you know, margin of error, we pretty much maintained our canopy within, within the township. For as far as us compared to the other townships, we had the second-largest tree canopy with 4,500 acres covered by trees within the township. We're about 8,000 acres, obviously. But over that 12-year period, Radnor had the second-lowest change in canopy. While we did lose 70 acres over the 12 years, that was only 1%, you know, of what we have. And the loss, of course, we've had, lost through the disease, age, and development, but I think that the proud thing for, for me as a township resident is it's offset by our Shade Tree ordinance, because we review with all the developers. We've got tree planting programs, the Shade Tree, the bare-root program has planted about 1,200 trees over the last five years, and we've had a lot of other giveaways, not only with us, but also with the Radnor Conservancy. So, all this is to say, we got all this stuff, how are we going to maintain it? There was a segue. The current situation is the township maintains the trees in the parks and in the right-of-way. They maintain the trees in the right-of-way if they're hazardous, dead, fallen, or lost large branches. And we've had a lot of that, you know, during, during October and December, September. If deemed necessary by our arborists, a township will remove the tree, all the debris, and grind the stump. What the township does not do, doesn't treat unhealthy trees with chemicals or whatever, remove vines from trees which can kill them, or prune them for aesthetic reasons, or remove a healthy tree at a resident's request. So that's kind of like where we are. And at the Shade Tree Commission, we discussed this, worked with Public Works, and we came up with this recommendation, which is essentially the township should continue to maintain the right-of-way, right-of-way trees, and also the parks, I should have mentioned that. But we wanted to suggest the residents have some sort of skin in the game, and have some sort of financial responsibility for their maintenance. That can take many forms, but we are recommending that they do get that skin in the game. We could do a reasonable flat fee for any sort of tree maintenance done under the direction of Public Works and consistent with the flat fees we already charge for people that can't plant a tree, and they give us money in lieu of planting a tree. So this is our ordinance, which you guys all know, but I think this recommendation is consistent with what we've been doing under the current Shade Tree ordinance. The issues that we considered is the benefits, of course. They provide cooling, flood control, well-being for the community. It aligns with our township mission to grow and preserve the township's tree canopy. That's specified in the ordinance. And the question came up, should the property owner bear any financial maintenance? And we kind of looked around. It costs about $200,000 a year to maintain trees last year, 2024, and a little bit less than that the year before. The Lower Marion Township has a tree department, which is their own trucks, their own arborists, their own everything, which is kind of the high-end way to go. Other townships either charge some percent of the cost of, of the tree. Township's escaping me right now, but one charges 70% of the cost to, to maintain, to take down a tree, a dead tree on a, on a right-of-way, on a, on a resident's property. So we think we're somewhat here in the middle in, in charging something that would defray the cost, but also have the resident have some skin in the game and maybe maintain the tree on their own. And at this point, any questions?
Thanks so much. I have one. Just, mine's quick. When you say "maintenance," that they should have some skin in the game, which I agree. The trick is, how do they know that their tree is either not being properly maintained? I mean, are we going to have an arborist put a note on the door? I mean, or are you just expect, because I think most people ignore their trees, frankly, unless they do something bad, like want to drop a branch on your head?
The, the current process seems to be working. Most of the trees that are deemed hazardous, the homeowner recognizes it, especially if a limb fell, or the tree is threatening, you know, falling into the street, and they, they, they call the township. They send out the arborist. He puts a little yellow band around the tree that it has to be taken down, and then the township puts it on their schedule and goes out and takes down the tree.
Yeah, that's the removal of trees. You're recommending that they, that the homeowner get involved with the maintenance of their trees, the pruning, the divining, the, you had a list.
It would be these, these four bullet points. When I say "maintenance," the maintenance is dealing with hazardous trees, dead trees, fallen trees.
No, I understand what the township does, but aren't you recommending, go to the next slide. Township does not treat unhealthy trees, remove vines, and aren't you trying to get the homeowner that's got the right-of-way involved in that?
Only if it's one of those four categories: dead, hazardous.
Madam President, if you don't, if you don't mind me jumping in, Frank, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
So when it comes to these, the township trees, and I'm going to call them right-of-way trees, because they are private property trees, but we, because of the ordinance, we want to be under the care of those trees. So when it comes to a resident, we do not give them the authority, and they don't have the authority, according to the ordinance, to do anything to the tree, pruning, anything at all. So it is 100% under township care.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
So, sorry. So a good suggestion for a homeowner that sees that a tree, you know, doesn't look good, they should contact the township, the right-of-way tree?
Yes, you can call Public Works, myself, the park supervisor, or Ms. Leah McVeigh at the main number, and we will then go out and measure the tree. That's the first step to make sure it's within the right-of-way. If it is, a ribbon will be placed around that tree, and that notifies, excuse me, the township arborists of what tree is in the right-of-way. And we'll also let the, the resident know that the tree, that ribbon signifies it's within the township right-of-way. So then we have to call the arborist. He comes out and he makes the determination. And the one thing I want to be 100% clear, once we call the township arborist, whatever his recommendation is, we go with. So if the resident says, "Well, I just want my tree pruned. I don't want it removed," we don't have the authority to now go against what his recommendation is.
Yeah, but then if he does say it should just be pruned, the township prunes it?
We will prune it. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Two, two questions. One, you plant a tree in the right-of-way, you move, and 10 years later, there's an issue with a tree. Now we're, now we're asking the homeowner who did not, who may not have wanted the tree in the right-of-way, that he has to pay to have it removed?
Mostly the trees that we plant in the right-of, I know what I'm doing, again. Mostly the trees that we plant in the right-of-way, the resident asks for, unless he's required-
But that's, but, but they're, they will eventually move, and a new homeowner will take over that property who may not have wanted trees in the right-of-way?
Maybe, but when he bought that house, he bought the tree.
But doesn't, doesn't know that he now has to pay to have it cared for?
Well, if it's in the ordinance, you know, it's just a matter of communicating the ordinance to the, to the resident, I believe.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask a question? How much are we talking about-
Maggie.
As that the homeowner would be charged?
It would depend on the tree, but let's let Commissioner Abel finish his thought. Sorry. Then we'll get to you.
Second, second question. The township's planted trees in the right-of-way for years. Those trees are now mature, and a lot of those that I've seen in, or some of those in West Wayne, were too big for the area that they were planted, and now they're uplifting sidewalks. So they're probably in some state of decline, and now you have uplifted sidewalks. What is the township's responsibility for that?
I think I know that answer, but I don't think I should answer it.
If it's in the right-of-way, it's the township's tree.
Yes, when it comes to, to sidewalks, we'll take it case-by-case basis and, and see what we can do. There was a situation that just happened on Valley Forge. Our first response is to save the tree. That is, we can replace a sidewalk, or we can work with the resident with replacing a sidewalk, but we do not want to be in the habit of removing trees just to replace a sidewalk. So we will work around that. And we had a case where that, and the resident was very happy that we were able to save the tree and also help with the sidewalk. So it's a case-by-case basis, so it's hard to just say one way which it'll go.
All right. I will send you multiple cases.
The, the other mitigating circumstance is, when I sell my house, I'm responsible for my sidewalk. So I have to fix any level problems, get, get the thing back where it's a nice, even thing for bicycles and stuff.
Correct, but not if there's a tree that's-
Well, usually that's what makes it buckle. I'm sorry, I interrupted you. I didn't mean to do that.
No, no, if, if the tree that the township planted is up, if, if it's uprooting the sidewalk, it shouldn't be the property owner's responsibility to fix the sidewalk.
But I think it is.
Okay, well, I mean, we just disagree on that. If-
Well, I'm not, I wasn't making it up.
Yeah, if you, if you buy a house, and there's a tree, and over the time you're, you know, owning the house, the tree buckles the sidewalk, the sidewalk's still your responsibility. You bought the house with the tree and the sidewalk.
We just heard, we just heard from, from Mr. Foster that-
Yeah, the sidewalk is under, according to the ordinance, the sidewalk is under the care of the resident whose house it's in front of. I referenced the part where it comes to someone wanting to remove a tree, a right-of-way tree, for the sidewalk. So those are two different things. I don't want to make a habit of just ripping down trees that are healthy for a sidewalk. So there's the differentiating factor. But the sidewalk is under the care of the resident whose house it is in front of.
And I will just add, we're keeping everything the same. As the ordinance stands now, there was, when we discussed this at the Shade Tree Commission, there was a vote, and the majority voted to just maybe put money towards a fund for planting a new tree, or taking part of the cost out. I think the cost of the tree was right around $1,700, $1,800 for removal. That's from the data we gathered from the township expenditures. And so we, I think the Shade Tree was looking for $200 or $300, or putting that money towards planting new trees to replace the trees that are taken down. So not really changing what the township's scope of work is. It's keeping it all the same. And for sidewalks, when you buy a house that you have to get a UNO, sidewalks are part of it. The, either the current homeowner or the new homeowner will be responsible for fixing it, replacing it.
Ma'am, actually, Mr. Foster, really. My reading between the lines, understanding, intuitive grasp of the obvious, is that the reason the township takes care of it is because limbs falling in the right-of-way is dangerous. And to rely on the homeowner to know, or decide, or have the money to do it, is a danger to the public. Therefore, that's why we take care of it. And moving that onto the shoulders, that responsibility onto the shoulders of the homeowner, is creating a danger. That's my belief. So you see, I'm going to vote on this, if it comes to, to-
So I guess the question is, are you taking the responsibility, or would Mr. Foster and his team and the arborists still be flagging that you're then just asking for some reimbursement of the fees to take the tree down?
I, I guess you can do that. I just, I, I think a lot of people don't ask. I, I guess some people ask to have a, a tree put in, but some people don't. And you're putting that responsibility on them, that the, where the township has put a tree in. That's one. Two, with regard to the sidewalks, and I've seen it happen in my neighborhood, where the sidewalk is fixed, but really what you do when you, when it's buckling, is you're damaging the roots, and that tree will fall at a really inopportune time. So it's not a good idea. I, I think it should be the township's responsibility, personally. If, if we've put in a tree that is now buckling a sidewalk, and if you're going to fix that, it has to be done really carefully. And so I think we're better suited.
So we put in some trees. Some are put in by developers as part of their, their development, and some of them are so old, we don't know who put them in. But the tree is owned by the resident. It's in the right-of-way, so we have some skin in the game. Sharing the cost of maintaining someone's tree, as well as taking care of the hazard, seemed like a good compromise in our discussion at the Shade Tree Commission. I mean, I respect your opinion, but that's kind of like where we were coming from. It's not our tree.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
I'm just saying that people pay taxes, services they receive, and this is a service they've been receiving, and they probably want to continue to receive it. So, and I do think we've created part of the problem.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? So I'm still a little bit confused. I, I understand this slide, and I understand what Mr. Foster has said. What I'm not really grabbing, other than the monetary side of what you're asking the homeowner to get involved in, is there anything else? I mean, you're not asking them to prune the tree, or take the vines down, or take care of the tree, just to help pay when it needs help?
Yeah, the job that we're doing now.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay? Am I free?
You're free. Thanks so much.
Madam Chairman-
Are there any, oh-
Can I ask?
Yes, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Frelick, I forgot.
Roughly, how much could a tree cost a homeowner?
What, to do what, to plant?
No, to remove.
Frank, I could-
Under, under your proposal, if he's sharing in the cost.
Ricky, could you help me on this?
Yeah, so what the Shade Tree had, had worked on was a percentage. Some townships do 20%, they do 30%. It, it is whatever is agreed upon by the board. So if a tree costs $20,000 to remove, and the resident portion is 20% of that, that's what they would be charged for.
So if it was $20,000 to remove, you'd be hitting a resident with a $4,400 charge?
Two, 400, not 44. He said if it's 2,000, or 2,200.
Oh, 2,000?
Yeah.
Okay, so you'd be hitting him with a $400 charge. And how would that charge be, would he get a bill? Who would be, would he have to pay it by a certain date? Would there be a 10% penalty if he missed the date? Who would follow up if he doesn't pay? Is there a lien on the property? I mean, there's a mechanism that, that needs to be attached to any decision to charge homeowners.
All very good questions from our treasurer. Thank you, thinking about it.
Of course, the treasurer. We would like to keep it as simple as possible. That's why we were going, heading towards a flat fee of maybe $300, $400 for the resident to be, to pay for that tree to be taken down. I know this is going to be put in a burden, I think, on Public Works, and we're, we're sensitive to that, because they would have to do the paperwork, you know, to, to get the, the resident billed and get the money back in. We do it today when someone hands us a check for $500 because there's no place to put a tree. It comes into the township, it goes into the Shade Tree Fund for planting new trees. But to keep it simple, I think would be a really good thing to do.
I agree. Thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Yep, thanks so much for the presentation. Next, we're going to have a presentation on the 2026, portions of the 26, 26 budget. Mr. White?
Yeah. Building off of the presentation given at the last Board of Commissioner meeting, there were two elements to that presentation that were toward the end of what I stepped through. So we were hoping tonight to, to go into a little bit more detail, specifically with departmental staffing requests and a Capitol overview. So we've got the departments teed up to give a brief presentation to the board and the public on the requests and the rationale behind those, and then I'll follow up stepping through some details on the Capitol side. I think the Police Department is going to go first. So Chief and Lieutenant?
Got to throw it all out there. All right.
Good evening, Commissioners. I want to thank you, the community, and Mr. White for allowing us to make a presentation. We're going to briefly go through some of our slides, but we did want to, we felt it was very important to realign our community with the services being provided with the police, and at the end, we will highlight the, the staffing requests. I also thank Lieutenant Pino for joining me this evening. Just to recap, right now, we're authorized with 50 officers, which includes 49 officers in the superintendent's position. Out of that, a highlight is 32 officers are in the patrol unit, community service unit has five, the detective unit has five, highway patrol unit has four, the administration team has four. All of those are officers, sworn personnel, and our full-time civilian staff is a total of three: one police social worker and administrative, two administrative assistants. Patrol Division, the 32, are the backbone of the Police Department, and they handle the majority of our calls. If you do note, it's 2023, not of our, all of our calls are closed out for 2024, so we're using the 2023 stats, 19,143, and of those are Part I crimes. Part I crimes are listed as the more serious. We do vacant house checks, which is a big part of what we do, often advertised by the township and the PIO. School visits, I'll stop on this just for a second. Our school visits is one of our biggest priorities. I want the community to know that that is our first step out the door. We're planning something for the schools. The run height fight training has gone through the roof, which is a good thing, people being proactive in training. But our requests for service or for those presentations and other things are absolutely awesome, but they also are in very high demand right now. So I did want to highlight that. We do business checks, sort of old-school policing, walking the Wayne Block, walking the Garrett Avenue area, where we have traditional sort of businesses that are easy to locate, and officers walk by, look for open doors, any type of issues, and it's sort of a, a quality thing. I will highlight the community service unit, which this board's leadership helped enact. As you know, we've even added a separate, by request of some of the Commissioners, we've even added a separate report. But this unit is, is standing tall, leading the area, but most importantly, delivering an unparalleled new level of service here in the community. And we're just very proud of their work, and I have to acknowledge again your guys' support for that. Our K-9 unit, it remains very active. There's a monthly K-9 report submitted. We have bomb and drug capabilities, which is very important. Our integrity control, which if anybody has a Sergeant Stianson, if anybody has an issue, they'll contact the sergeant. He'll walk through. We handle all the incidents that may come in and work with the community should they have a concern. Very importantly, today, under Pleiak Coordination, which is our law enforcement accreditation, I didn't even get a chance to tell the manager, I received in the mail today our recertification, which was an excellent letter to receive today. So huge work by Sergeant Stianson and retired Lieutenant Dietrich. Highway Patrol Division, as you see, these guys are out. They inspect trucks, they handle serious crash investigations. We'll keep moving for brevity. Traffic safety, one of the biggest things is certain issues come up sort of on a monthly basis, sometimes often forwarded by our Commissioners, because your, your ability to have contact in your community. And very importantly, they handle a monthly staff traffic meeting, which is Public Works, Engineering. A lot of us get together and really try and make the township as safe as possible, or as efficient as possible with the roadways. Our Detective Bureau clearly handles criminal investigations, a lot of work with the District Attorney's Office, and there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work, such as expungements and other things, where we, if a judge orders an expulsion, we have a lot of work to do here to clear out certain documents related to that. Clearly, we handle evidence management, and that is a never-ending and very litigious process that we take very, very seriously, including evidence processing on the scene should that occur. Our Parking Authority has one full-time supervisor, and for part-timers, where we manage just under 1,000 parking spaces. That does include all of the special parking zones in the township, but that is definitely a, a very busy position. And as you can see, we have up to 10,000 parking tickets this year. They also handle all our kiosk management and our pay-by-phone, and we work very closely with the Finance Department on that. Another item that the Parking Division does, our supervisor, Mike Maritaya, manages the crossing guards, which is a big responsibility. Our crossing guards here are awesome, and they are out there keeping our kids safe. A huge shout-out to them. And then the parking staff, even the part-timers will fill in should somebody have an illness. And it's anybody who lives in the lower end of the township. We're chasing coyotes right now. Our Animal Control Division with deer, culling, other wildlife animals and things, including dog bites, is also a busy, probably two to three calls a day of some type of animal response. We do do our own crime alerts, which the lieutenants handle, where we try and keep people in reference, up to date in reference to any crimes or related issues in the community. The administration is managing sort of everything, and we are a big interface with the manager's office and the other great departments here, and following all our budget and PO processes. A small percentage of what we do, we don't have our own units, but what we do is let the community know, we have a, a big impact by having officers part-time on some of these units. We're part of the county's Narcotics Drug Task Force, which obviously runs through drug investigations. We've yielded some big things. We're not big enough, and thank goodness, we don't have a reason to have our own tactical team, but we do participate in a county-wide SWAT team should we need their services, because our officers are on there. They come in at no charge to Radnor Township, because we're providing officers for that. We manage our Radnor Citizens Police Organization, which is a great thing. They come out and help us on various programs. Our Radnor Police Chaplains Program, we just held a training here at the Township Building utilizing this awesome room. So we have, I believe, two new chaplains. One did a ride-along today, matter of fact. And now we get to the staffing request. Lieutenant, just give them, want to let the community know that in 2022, we handed it, we conducted a study with the Spirit Consulting to provide an assessment of the township and what we thought the police and staffing needs would be in the future. This came before the Commissioners, and it was the catalyst for the Community Service Unit, which five officers- Unit, which five officers were added to the Police Department. I am extremely grateful for that support because, as we know, just one person can't fix all the mental health needs, so having a unit that does that and also put them during what we call sort of a priority shift, which is 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., when our call volume is the highest. However, following up with the 2022 Staffing Report, which I'm giving you each a hard copy to each of the Commissioners, we have three positions that we would like to request your consideration for this coming budget year or in the future as we come. Those requests would include one officer for the Patrol Division, one officer for the Detective Unit, and one officer for a training and quartermaster position, which is a new position that we would be creating. Just real quickly, the highlights, the Detective Unit, these detectives are on call. We are hoping to add one detective to distribute the current workload that is there, and also their on-call time, which is a significant impact to their personal lives, where you're on call 24/7. Right now, we do it, we do it by the week, just because of the way the shifts rotate, and having people change over sometimes creates a problem. So having one person on when there's a major case really ends up being the best way to do it. If we have more people, there may be an option to sort of change that workload. But the on-call and the call volume is listed here. We would distribute caseloads a lot more evenly, reduce investigative backlog, and have enhanced response to complex and time-sensitive cases where we could add more detectives should that become an issue. Our Patrol Division, as you know, you guys supported us hugely, and our response times are better, and we're distributing caseloads, as you can see, 252 CSU, which stands for Community Service Referrals, and our call volume as of September 30th was 16,737. Each one of our platoons has eight officers. By the way, we broke it up, which I showed on the earlier slide, one of our third platoon, if I'm correct, has seven. We'd like to bring that unit to eight. The other, the other three patrol divisions have eight officers. We're allowed two off. Obviously, there's also life, life issues, medical issues that sometimes come up, and people injured. That having to balance platoon and even number would definitely allow us to help. So if we were awarded the three officers, one of the positions would go to the patrol function, thus having eight persons per each platoon. Probably one of the newest and something that we would really like to have you consider is, as you see in our chief's report, our training has really increased. Succession planning and responsible policing, having these officers get better training, also get a little break from the street is critical. So this has just turned into a huge undertaking. We have a lot of policies and procedures. The state of Pennsylvania, as they should, have a lot of now new document, new documents that they like to have in reference to training, and our certification level and responsibilities have increased. Plus, we have our own internal training, such as weapons and other related things where we shoot at least two times a year. You're only required to shoot one time a year. We want to have as much weapon proficiency, use-of-force proficiency and de-escalation as possible. We just recently experienced with some de-escalation techniques at a farm using some horses. So we're continuing to grow to make sure our people are trained. This year, with Isabel, our police social worker, I apologize, Isabel Cook, we're hopefully having 100% compliance with the CIT program, which allows police officers to be prepared to handle mental health emergencies. I would call it a mental health first aid class, not taking away from the seriousness of it, but we can get people in three days, which we're getting Isabel her instructorship, so we'd be one of the few police departments with 100% compliance. This training officer would either cover or help manage that, rotate the shifts through so the lieutenants who are currently doing that now can manage the call volume. One is a detective and administrative and a special operations lieutenant. Lieutenant Pino, to my left, handles patrol, as you know. Patrol's the biggest and busiest, so there's a lot of work to do with that, and we'll talk about a couple of things in a minute. Our demands that have occurred, sort of the way the world is during our current times, the active shooter incidents, the active shooter trainings, even our own, the world was watching us at Villanova, where over 300 police officers and emergency services personnel responded to an emergency. Our demand for service is really getting to a high level, and we want to keep the board aware of it. Because of some of those things, our extra-duty details are massive right now. We probably have easily over 1,000 details besides for the responsibilities I just went over that we're dealing with and providing services. We also have to ask other departments to help us because I, because we need that support, such as a Villanova support for a football game or a basketball game, could be up to 20 to 25 officers, just as an example. Our daily assessments for the two schools where we provide security and traffic direction, it just, it continues to grow. Just want to make you aware of that, also of our, our awesome township and our unbelievable events. There's a lot of staffing that goes on for those, and I think public safety now, before police officers get kind of direct traffic and then go away, we never leave a venue anymore. So you get there two hours beforehand, you're direct traffic, then we were kind of done. Now, we are onsite. We, we don't leave our posts. The officers are there to provide true policing services, protection services, plus managed traffic. So we do a couple of other things. So the current demands, training, our details and other things have led us to really a new standard of performance. I'm very proud of the level that we're cranking it out, but it is, you know, it does draw down on us. Having more officers in our team would allow us to do a better job. And I would just like to, while I got the microphone, I couldn't do it without the women and the men in this Police Department. They're very dedicated to this community and the township, and I want to thank them for their service. That is my presentation.
Thank you very much. Anybody have questions? Commissioner Agnew?
And not that this is the most important, but it is the budget we're talking about. So I realize this is not, it would not be even in mind in the, you know, hierarchy of importance, but since we're talking money. It, to add, and I don't expect you to have the numbers off the top of your head, so if you'd just get it to us. How much does it cost for a new officer that, you said would alleviate the overtime? So how much are we spending on overtime? And then how much would that officer cost that we'd balance out the numbers?
So luckily, I was prepared for that question.
Just to have that question.
And I was looking over to our amazing Finance Department, Township Manager. So we did discuss this, and, you know, do want to let you know, there's things that we do that we do get reimbursements, but in reference to calls, I'll turn it over to Mr. White, see how he wants to answer.
The cost of an officer is easy to identify. I think that the trick in that request is going through the overtime and determining how much of that overtime is the result of being absent an officer or mandatory overtime as a result of officers missing for various reasons or shift coverage and that type of thing. So that will take a little bit of research to
Okay. Thank you.
To dig up.
Any other Commissioner questions?
I do.
Commissioner Mulrooney?
As you know, I'm a big fan of the CSU, and I'm always so impressed to hear updates about how impactful that group is, particularly Isabel Cook. So I'm wondering, similarly, a training officer that you're asking for to oversee training, could that be done by a civilian?
Yes.
Thank you.
There are some things, though, that they couldn't do, so I don't want to trick you, but I will give you an example, that organizing certificates, doing data entry, and scheduling could be done by a civilian. And in fact, the great example would be is our huge amount of details that we do for schools. We have a civilian who coordinates almost all of that and does all the bookkeeping, Lori Danicola. However, at some point in time, a lieutenant has to take over or a sergeant line up that staff and make sure that we're covered and, and also manage that incident on there. So in reference to training, if we had to use our TASER training or our, our Weapons Platform, whichever one we would be talking about, we would need a police officer to actually do that, just because you have to be a law enforcement officer to have that. Some of the access to some of the computer things that we do, a civilian can be trained, and then there's a couple of things that they can't do, but it's kind of a hybrid answer, but I want to be as specific as I can.
No, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, thank you for your time. I'm here representing Public Works. So we have a slogan that we came up with, and I really like this, so I do want to start with that. Investing in Public Works for Community Service Excellence. Now, tonight, we're going to talk about the Public Works Staffing Request. So we're asking for three individuals, and they're going to be spread out over three different divisions. The Sewer Maintenance Division, our Fleet Maintenance Division, and also the Parks Maintenance Division. Now, the Parks, Public Works Division or Department, we operate efficiently, but our goal to ask for these additional staff would be to be more proactive. So we're already proactive, but we want to do better at that job, just with our daily operations. We're going to take the Sewer Maintenance Division first. Now, that consists of three full-time employees, one field leader and two laborers. They maintain and repair over 125 miles of sanitary sewer mains. There's also four sewer pumping stations that they maintain and repair. They also are responsible to maintain and repair over 3,900 sanitary and stormwater sewer manholes. They also have to respond to over 4,000 PA1 calls, 811, Call Before You Dig. Now, this system is, I'm not going to say tricky, but it is a little temperamental because it requires a response time under the law. Now, these PA1 calls, they come in 24/7, 365, and we have about a two-hour window before we actually get fined from the PUC. So it is something that has to be taken care of whenever they come about. And that Sewer Maintenance Division, they work in conjunction with the Engineering Department when it comes to the sanitary and storm system, and we also work with our GIS Coordinator. The three of us or three of them have been working together to have a mapping system for all those parts that we just mentioned. Now, the reason for the request for the sanitary, for the Sewer Division is we have our regular jetting and cleaning of our sanitary sewer main, which all of the laterals from everyone's houses flows into. Now, the job, this requires three dedicated staff, and right now, we only have three dedicated staff in that division. So when it comes time for us to jet the main, we don't have any other staff to go anywhere else to perform any other sewer duties. So it is important to make sure that we get that done. Also, we have regular televising of the sewer lines, and this is important because it helps us with taking care of small issues so they don't become bigger issues. We also have increased stormwater systems that, and they create a daily need for us to make sure we stay on top of those requiring attention. And also, the last part is employee safety while working in manholes. Those individuals in that department or that division, they have confined space training, so it's very important for them to stay on top of that. Now, if there was an emergency, and let's say we needed to, two guys were off taking care of something else, and something happened with one individual, that is why it's a safety concern to have an extra individual, because we always try to have two at one time when they go and check those four pump stations. It's always two individuals to do that. We cannot send one for safety reasons. So that is the request for the Sewer Division. So let's go to the Fleet Maintenance Division. Now, there's three full-time employees within that division. There's a field leader, and then there's two mechanics or techs that assist him, and they maintain over 135 vehicles within Public Works and also just equipment. Now, that takes care of police and also sanitation. Every vehicle, piece of equipment that we have, those three gentlemen are responsible for caring for it. They also have the PA State inspections they have to maintain and they have to record, and that's for all the vehicles that are owned by the township. There's also DP records that have to be kept and maintained. The fuel that we have, that we keep our vehicles running with, there's registrations, there's inspections, and there's regulations that have to be followed. So here's the request, that additional staff member, here's the reason why we feel it's important. The township services are growing. The size of the township is growing, the complexity is growing, the maintenance demands on the vehicles and equipment, equipment is growing. So to have an extra employee to deal with that, staff member, would be very instrumental. We're requesting a small engine specialist. Now, this staff member would also be able to work on the vehicles and the equipment that we have, but also, we don't have a particular person who can handle the smaller things, the generators, the blowers, the trimmers, the mowers, all of those things. So while our current staff do address these things, but sometime if they get busy with the bigger things, they are more important. So they would be able to assist with the smaller and the larger. And it's a safety concern, and the reason why I say that is because when the current staff is working, I'm going to use an example. So if we have those three individuals, the field leaders, let's say he's out, he's dealing with vendors or picking up parts or whatever has to be done, that leaves two left. So let's say something happens, a township vehicle, police car, anything is out on the road. One staff member goes and takes care of that. Now, he's safe because he has the other people with him to work on that on the road, wherever that may be. That leaves one staff member left in the garage. Now, we have a rule that's been implemented, that if there is a vehicle up on a lift and you're in there by yourself, you cannot be under that lift. Now, if we had an extra staff member, we would always be able to make sure that there's two in the garage at all times, just for safety reasons. Let's go to Parks Maintenance. So there's 13 full-time employees in that division. Now, that also includes the Parks Supervisor, but he's mentioned in there. Now, the whole objective behind that department is to keep the parks safe, clean, and welcoming. Now, this is done, I'm going to speed through all of that, keeping the grass cut, trimmed, removing the trash and recycling, cleaning and stocking the comfort stations, weekly maintenance and grooming of the baseball fields, regularly shrubbery trimming, we remove at all township-owned properties, and just the daily general maintenance that has to be done, repairs of the parks, equipment, buildings, fences. Now, that all falls underneath that division. Now, let's go to the request, the reason for it. Increased workload and service demand to maintain the expanded park and trail system. You'll hear from Director Cohen, and she'll talk about more of that and how there's the spillover between those two departments within Public Works and also Parks and Rec. There's also increased park use that has led to more wear and tear, which also requires more additional maintenance and which we want to make sure we stay on top of for safety and appearance. Increased ability to address tree care. We talked about that some with the Shade Tree Commission when Mr. White had made his presentation about the request of the staff increase. This is one thing that we wanted to be able to add more on our shoulders within Public Works, which we did with this tree bid. We removed about, I'm going to say about 30 trees out of the ones that were put ahead of you. Also, when it comes to event support, Public Works and in particular Parks Maintenance, they are a very big supporter of the setup and also the cleanup with any event that happens, whether it's township staff or an outside entity. And the current staffing levels is making it difficult to meet the established maintenance and safety standards. So in closing remarks, adding this one staff member to each of these three divisions will narrow the gap from Public Works. Again, our goal, we are proactive, but we want to be more proactive, and we feel like these three individuals will be able to help us get there. We also want to help maintain a level of service and expectations provided to the Radnor residents who deserve the best, and the Public Works Department continues to face growing demands due to increased infrastructure, higher service expectations, and additional regulatory requirements. Now, the Radnor Township community is growing, so what we're asking you to do is know that the Public Works staff needs to grow with it. So we're asking you to invest in the future of Radnor through Public Works. So thank you, Commissioners, for your time. Thank you, Radnor residents who are here in person and those who are watching at home. Mr. White, thank you for your time. And last, I want to thank the Public Works staff. I have to mention Ms. Leah McVeigh by name because so much that she does for us, she helped me prepare this, so I have to give her credit. But also, the Public Works staff, from the newest hire to the oldest staff member that we have, they have truly bought in to providing an excellent just job for the Radnor residents. So I really can't be up here representing them without thanking them. So thank you, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Foster? No, I think you were pretty explanatory.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Welcome, Director Cohen.
I went against the grain a little bit, and I did a presentation and a prezi application, so I just, I need to get it up. Figured I'd try something new tonight. So hopefully, it doesn't go into abort mode. Anyways, thank you for the opportunity this evening to speak. The position that I'm proposing is the Park Operations Coordinator, as you would have seen in Mr. White's presentation a couple of weeks ago. So this position is an administrative support position for park, really, park maintenance and operations. and operations, aimed at advancing Radnor's parks, recreation, and its environmental goals and services. The two departments that'll be impacted with the addition of this role would primarily be the Parks and Recreation Department, and then, to a degree also, the Public Works Department within the Parks Division, specifically, the Parks Supervisor. So, I'm not going to go into too much detail about our existing staffing overview. I know you guys understand, you know, kind of what we do, and the gist of it, and we're a small department, so there's not a whole lot to discuss, but the existing five staff members in Parks and Rec will continue to provide the same high quality of life services and demands that they currently have with regards to all of our programming, our day camp, the events, everything. Nothing's going to change there, and those folks do a great job. There's a high level of interface, as Mr. Foster had indicated, between our department, of course, and the Public Works Parks Division, in terms of how we collaborate in the things that we do, on a daily basis, really, in a lot of different ways. Nothing changes there in that regard either, but just one thing I do want to point out, just because it does dovetail to Ricky's presentation, is, at the height of the park maintenance staffing peak, in terms of employees, really, was about 18 employees, and there also were several part-time staff members that were hired over the summer. So, now, with the 13 that they have, including Mr. Ledgerton as the Parks Supervisor, and now maintaining more spaces, more demand, and more things, it's been quite a difference and quite a change. So, I just, I wanted to point that out, because I do feel that that is very important, given the amount of demand that has grown, and a lot of new facilities that we, of course, have had come on board with park improvements and additional park facilities over the years. So, the two positions that really are being most impacted, and where the genesis of this role is coming from, is really, it's really to meet a lot of the demand that I've gotten in my role in the last decade, which has really stemmed from, number one, our GOBs, our General Obligation Bonds, where we had significant borrowing in 2016, where there were eight park projects that came down the pike, one of which, I know you guys know that we're in the middle of with Fenimore Woods. 2019, we had two basketball courts being resurfaced, and then, of course, the Facilities Bond, most recently, which has an impact with regards to Radnor Activity Center, to a small degree, but we know that that's a big project on the horizon. So, with that regard, you know, there's a lot of things that my role has grown into, that I'm still working, you know, very diligently with regards to recreation, supporting the community events and development, the sponsorship development, and all that comes along with that, and of course, overseeing the programming, but really, the most demand has come from a lot of the projects. So, in addition to just the general park, the major park, I should say, capital projects, I have a significant amount of time that goes into community organization and resident projects, which there's never, never seems to be a shortage of, and that's just a testament to the great people that we have living here in Radnor Township, which I know, I'm speaking to the choir here, everybody understands that. But recently, there've been a lot of things that have escalated. Our major sports organizations have had projects that they've been wanting to implement, with turf fields, ball field lights, expansions of different parts of their surface delivery, irrigation systems, additional fields, and believe it or not, those are things I get down in a rabbit hole very quickly with our organizations, and try to give them a lot of time to that. There's a significant amount of Eagle Scout projects. We usually have two to three of those that are open on any given, any given day. We have a lot of resident-led projects, where folks want to do different plantings, start gardens, things like that that are going on. And then, I'm also knee-deep in a lot of the grant writing, so even though Melissa Kahn, who is our grant coordinator, does a lot of backend administration on that, a lot of the core substance, I contribute to that as well, which puts a great demand. And we have a lot of great grants that are actually in process right now, which is terrific. So, our Parks Supervisor, I don't, I don't want to discount the things that he's doing also, because he and I have a significant amount of collaboration through a lot of these things. And there's also a lot of trickle-down. So, just in terms of, like, new projects that have come online, like Fenimore Woods, there's a lot of collaboration that still goes into that, even knowing that something like the stable, for example, is going to be renovated, there's going to be an impact to our Public Works Department. And I consult with the Parks Supervisor. Little things, like what makes it easier to be, what kind of amenities make it easier to be within that building for them to maintain? Is electronic handblowers? Is it paper towels? Like, little things like that, believe it or not, we spend a lot of time on. To then, much bigger projects. For instance, right now, in a couple weeks, you may see a project come before you with regards to an irrigation project at Anki Park, led by our Radnor Way Little League Organization. It's been a lot of detail to go into that, to get it sort of to that point, but a lot of that collaboration is taking, taking place. So, even though this position will be a direct report to me, there will be a significant amount of involvement on behalf of our Parks Supervisor. So, just to move along a little bit, so the Park Operations Coordinator essentially will be geared towards also achieving some of the goals of the township's comprehensive plan. I know many of our board members were involved in the comprehensive plan, and know that it is jam-packed full of Parks and Recreation initiatives. There certainly is no shortage within there. The role will also be important in helping us achieve accountability for a lot of our contractual services that we have out in the parks today. Some of those are one-time, because it's involving a repair to a water fountain, or some other feature in the park. Some of it has to do with ongoing, like pond treatments that we have done at the Willows and Fenimore. Also, rain gardens. Been a big reinstallation that we had in the last year, and, you know, making sure that the contractor that's out there is doing the work that has been scoped out and set forth. Sometimes, it's difficult to get there, to see the work as soon as that they've been done, and this is something that role could be out there and do, get pictures, interface, and make sure the accountability of the scope of work's been performed to our expectations. Operational support for the parks, I'll get into some of that in a minute, as well as starting to take proactive, you know, being a more proactive approach, of course, to our park spaces. I know we are now, but this is just continuing that and taking it to another degree. So, passion for our parks, I don't, I don't want to discount this, because it's so significant. It's amazing how much people have and how much feel about their parks and the projects, and it's all ages. I mean, it's our 16- and 18-year-olds who are Eagle Scouts, or they're doing community service projects. It's a lot of our adults, obviously, within the community. It's really what makes Radnor amazing, and one of those things I thought when I first got here 26 years ago, that, you know, maybe that would die down at some point, and maybe, like, the projects will start to dissipate a little bit, but there's no way. In fact, they've actually increased pretty significantly in the last decade, which is exciting, because it enables us to do so much more, and it's really one of those defining factors about Radnor Township. And of course, this is a list of all of our facilities, all of our amenities, and the great things that you already know that we have, which is very significant, spread across our very small township. So, the current challenges and the core responsibilities of this position, as I had mentioned, contractual services are huge, and meeting contractors out within parks with regards to repairs and things like that are needed, really involve a lot of time. And a lot of times, we'll meet with a contractor, we'll develop a scope of work, they'll go back and they'll send it to us, and it doesn't look anything like we discussed on site. So, I think everybody's familiar with that, and it gets really frustrating, because then there's a lot of back and forth to finally get, you know, get to a work product that we both feel good about, then getting the contractor out there, doing the work, and having it be produced to our expectations. So, this role would help absorb a lot of the demand that has grown in that direction. In addition, also, the implementation for some of the non-capital projects, so some of the smaller projects, like memorial benches and trees. You know, we heard a lot earlier about the tree coverage throughout Radnor, which was an amazing statistics to learn, based on the recent study, and there's a lot of tree involvement, obviously, with Public Works and our department with that overlap, because a lot of people like to, like to plant memorial trees. It's a big thing that folks like within our parks. It takes time to go out, look at the sites, a lot of times, they have very specifics on where they want it to be, the type of tree they want. Sometimes, that goes against our arborist recommendations, so we have to sort of sort through that and go through that. And amongst a lot of other projects, recently, we had a resident want to plant a beautiful flower garden over at North Wayne Park. Took a lot of weeks to put that together. We have an operating MOU on how that works, so took a little bit of time, but lo and behold, if you go over to the park today, although it's probably dying off a little bit right now, but it flourished, I know, a couple weeks ago, we had gotten some pictures of it, and it's a beautiful flower garden that the resident had planted. Recently, we met with the Wayne Garden Club out on the Radnor Trail. They're looking at expanding some of their garden space. A lot of these things take time, and we try to really give our residents, especially our community organizations, a lot of time and attention through that process. Operational support, something that really isn't thought of much, but like, our pickleball courts especially, have become top-heavy in terms of time. We have mobile nets that are out at the sites now. We have to keep a check on those. Sometimes, they become dismantled and have to be reorganized, they have to go back in the storage closets for the winter. There's a lot of time that goes into that. These are things that the Public Works Department can always get to, that we're often dealing with, and it's left to the five people within our department to kind of have to go in and manage that. The comfort station storages are always a mess, I can tell you. Between soccer, pickleball, and our Little League organization sometimes sharing those spaces, it's a constant, trying to keep up with that and the communication that goes along with that. Unauthorized usage in our parks is a big one. We have an ongoing issue at Radnor Memorial Park, where we have businesses and private trainers operating. It would be great during the day, in the mornings, when we know that there's, these groups are out there, to be able, be able to have an extra person that can go out and address some of those items. Informational signage, I can't tell you enough how many times residents call me and tell me that our signage just doesn't work, there's too much, there's not enough, it doesn't say the right things. It's a constant discussion, meeting on site, so a lot of those things, this role could help absorb some of that time. Building community engagement, we know this was a big one that also came out of the comprehensive plan, engaging a lot of our groups. Just today, I had another message about a community group that wants to pull invasive species from the trees at the Willows. So, that's a big thing. We've heard a lot about that from Radnor Conservancy over the years, trying to kickstart projects. Our Environmental Advisory Council, I know, is always kind of getting after me to see how we can kickstart some of those projects, and these are things where this role could serve as that vital link, to be able to take the time to put those partnerships together, and then hold those groups accountable, and get them involved, get them the training that might be needed, to try and make some of these things happen, and then start to help us, you know, to celebrate the stuff that we're doing and recognize it, because that's really important also, through different initiatives and different events. So, I'm not going to elaborate too, too much more on the comprehensive plan, but I do want to point out that four of the eight areas of the comprehensive plan directly impact our parks and our recreation, because there is a significant amount of information in there about recreational programming, and continuing to ensure that that is operated at a high quality and high availability. But there's a lot of things within the plan, I know that we want to start to building towards those objectives and meeting those objectives. And then, of course, there's no shortage of additional support in areas. I know that Mr. Foster had already noted about the community event support that we get from his staff. One of the things the staff also do is help us move our basement-filled amount of equipment that we own, that's, you know, sports equipment, arts and crafts stuff, all these things that we have, believe it or not, most of the basement, we take up, and getting those things out to their sites on a regular basis is something that we can't just take in our little vehicle. It has to go in a big vehicle, and it has to be transported, and having a support person to help us with this stuff would also be key. Radnor Activity Center is the gift that keeps on giving. There's always something going on over there that we have to address, and again, our Public Works staff do an amazing job at supporting us, but having an extra person to be able to support those issues with regards to some of the problems that happen over there would be really fantastic. So, again, lots of benefits to this position. I think they're unending, in terms of how they can support not only one, but two departments. And then, also, just some of the final thoughts, obviously, with regards to sustainability and conservation. I would personally like to have this person come in with a background. I know there's lots of Parks and Recreation majors today that are focusing in this area, so it would be great to start, to get someone in that has that expertise. Myself and Ricky and Steve, we spent a lot of time researching in this area. It would be great to have somebody that comes in with a background and has a fresh, you know, set of knowledge coming out of school to maybe help to get us going, you know, and achieving some of those objectives, and help us accomplish more in that regard. Overall, matching the community's demand, again, there's just always so much going on. Our community is filled with knowledgeable, expert-based people who know a lot of things about what they're doing, what we're doing, and want to contribute, and that's a wonderful thing, to be able to engage that, but having somebody to be able to facilitate it and be able to match that energy would be critical. And then, lastly, I just want to talk about the future of Parks and Recreation, to make sure that within this department, you know, we're set up for succession planning. I know Steve Ledgerton is coming upon retirement, and, you know, I know, you know, my time might not be here as long as I would maybe like it to be also, but I want to make sure that we're in a good position as the future comes, to be able to manage all of these things, and be able to take this on, because we need the passion. And right now, you know, I don't see that up and coming, I'll be honest with you. Like, my staff's very focused on programming, I think we have a lot of good knowledge, but I think we need more and more of that to lead us into the future. I know we have a major goal of establishing a capital plan. If and when that happens, that's going to be able to put, that's going to be putting a lot more demand on the department as well. So, some of these, you know, lighter-level projects and lower-level projects really are going to need somebody to kind of jump in and learn those, and learn our culture, and really start helping us chart a course for the future. So, I just, I want to say thank you for the time tonight. Again, I didn't want to get too buried into what we're doing, but really kind of focus a little bit more on what we need. Thank you to all the Commissioners, of course, the Parks and Recreation Board, who gives unending support, as well as Mr. White.
Thank you very much. Questions for Director Cohen? We don't want to see you leave too early.
Thank you. I don't want to leave. But I want to make sure that when I do, that we're in a really good spot, and that's really important to me.
Everybody has to have a system.
So, maybe I didn't quite convey that, thinking back on it now, but I want to make sure that that's really important, is that that is there.
You got our attention.
Yeah, good. Thank you very much. Do you have anything to add?
Well, sure. As a segue into the capital discussion, which some of this will be repeat versus, or on top of what we heard from each of the Directors and their requests, I, you know, in addition, our greatest compliment as an organization and as a staff is also what hurts us, I think, a lot of times in these conversations, because our leaders, our Directors, and our supervisory staff, right down to the laborers and the folks on the front lines, they're so focused every single day on serving the community and being responsive to the requests, and finding ways to be responsive in every way, it does stretch, it stretches everyone thin. And when you, when you take a step back, which our folks get to do every day, it gets taken for granted or lost sometimes in these meetings, where we're focused a lot on legislative items, land development, and, you know, the larger elements of what's going on in the township. It's nice to get into some of the details and to hear from these folks on what the stressors are every day, and where we feel, as an organization, we might be able to do better, and offer an incremental better service to our community. So, it's always, I appreciate the time from the Commissioners tonight to be able to present that. I appreciate the work that each of our department heads went into putting this information together. This is a daily conversation inside these walls, so it's nice to have a public conversation about it as well. And not to be dismissed, we had an earlier conversation this year with the board's support in combining the Community Development Engineering Departments into one, so they had their moment earlier this year, where we were able to move forward with some operational efficiencies and gain some, some benefits there. So, not that they're absent from this conversation, but we made some decisions on that front earlier this year. And with that, if it's okay, I'd like to transition into capital. There we go. Thank you, sir. All right. So, the, what I'd like to step through tonight, and really, the overall goal isn't to walk out of here with a bunch of answers to issues, but hopefully, everyone walks out tonight with a strong grasp of the types of capital that, when we use that word, it seems to be like a catch-all for everything, not related to operations. like a catch-all for everything not related to operations. So hopefully be able to define and put some of those projects and purchases into buckets. Talk a little bit about our departmental fleet and equipment, especially what's included in the 2026 numbers that I presented on last meeting. Give the board an update from a very high level on the bond projects, some of which you heard from the department heads a moment ago. Start touching on, or I guess blow the dust off a little bit on our unfunded capital project overview. And then just, again, in terms of continuing the conversation about strengthening the township's financial position, is throw out some concepts for a capital improvement plan going forward. So types of capital, so what are we talking about when we use the word "capital"? Very, very high level. I mean, we're talking about infrastructure, parks, trails, open spaces, building and fixtures, as well as our department fleet and equipment. We take a look at infrastructure, it's roads, sidewalks, streetlights, signals, intersections, sewer systems, culverts, detention basins. There's probably another dozen that aren't included in this example list, but that's the type of stuff. It's long-lasting, usually very expensive type of infrastructure that the township owns and is responsible for maintaining. Typically, how we fund those things is through some sort of taxes, annual set-asides. We issue bonds for the larger ones, larger expenditures. We usually offset projects with some sort of grants. We're very fortunate in that regard. And that, or the project or the improvement is funded through fees. Two good examples here in Radnor are stormwater and sewer fees, as well as various public-private partnerships, mostly through our facilities at this point. Departmental fleet and equipment, vehicles, trucks, you know, dump trucks, garbage trucks, big trucks, little trucks, tractors, mowers, trailers, barricades, down to our IT equipment that lives in this building, some of the equipment that are used by our officers between the weapons and the body armor, radios, communication equipment, our blowers, trimmers, saws, the road striping equipment, specialty equipment that exists over in Public Works to do a lot of road maintenance-type stuff, striping, fixing potholes, fixing curbs, that type of stuff. We fund all of that under this category. As I talked about at the last presentation, we have a full spreadsheet that itemizes every single one of these, or inventories every single one of these pieces of equipment, and then schedules out their replacement over the next 10 years. Typically, we're funding these through taxes. We set aside annually an amount in the general fund, and I'll get into a little bit more detail on that in a moment. We utilize capital leases, as well as some grants. Recently, we used grants to fund the purchase of a couple EVs, as well as the charging of those EVs. We do occasionally benefit from partnerships. Most recently, with the county communication upgrades, we realized getting all-new radios for the police department. And then historically, we've been somewhere in between $1.5 to $2 million per year in this category. I put that in here just to show that it is a relatively significant part of our annual budget. Buildings and fixtures, as the name would indicate, these are all of our buildings, as well as the fixtures that are attached to them that make them operational, electrical systems, the fueling station. Mr. Foster referred to the lifts over at the Public Works Garage, major IT equipment, the mechanical equipment, and the like. And similar, as the infrastructure group, since these tend to be more expensive investments, taxes, bonds, some grants, fees for storm, not so much fees, except for the pumping stations and those types of facilities, and then any kind of public-private partnerships, again, mostly dealing with our, the buildings and the facilities themselves, the Willis Park Preserve, the Mainline School Night, we have Pasebo in this building. Parks, trails, and open spaces, all of our parks, all of the park amenities, which are, I threw some examples up here. Tammy had a much more exhaustive list in her presentation a moment ago. The township benefits from a great, great number of trails. Most of them are paved that require maintenance and ongoing upkeep, as well as two significant trail expansion projects that have been designed, but yet, not yet funded in terms of their installation, as well as all of our township open spaces. So areas that are not developed or have any amenities but are still maintained by our organization. How it's funded, bonds, which is debt that is issued with two different funding mechanisms, general obligation, which is basically any kind of debt issued with the full faith and backing of the township's ability to raise taxes to fund it. That's, that's the general category of every type of debt we have. More specific type of debt is you have voted referendums, I included that. Some of the parks or open spaces, sorry, open spaces that the township has purchased within the last 25, 30 years were purchased through bonds issued backed by a voted referendum. Not all of those, the township did not raise taxes accordingly, but the authority that backed those purchases was through voted referendums. Those purchases and acquisitions, some of which offset by grants, the Ardrossen Purchase had a million-dollar county grant with it. We also benefit from public-private partnerships on this front, too, as well as tax support to fill in the empty spaces. So going into a little bit more detail about departmental fleet and equipment, what's included in the presentation from two weeks ago, there was a general fund transfer of 1 million, just shy of 1.5 million included in that number. Making that up are the list of requests here. We have committed capital leases. I'll go into that more detail in each of these here in a second. A request from police, Public Works, IT, Fire Department Capital, which is new, as well as requests from Parks and Recreation. Tammy touched on this a moment ago. And then the township's capital contributions to Radnor and Bryn Mawr Fire, just noting that based, ongoing conversations that started a year ago with Radnor Fire Company and the various sources of money they have to purchase capital and how those are being utilized, the township's contribution is currently under review, which Chief Smith is working with them on. And the 110 for Bryn Mawr is a consistent number that the township has given on an annual basis going back a few years. Committed leases, what these are, and I'm not going to go vehicle by vehicle, but over the past budget cycles dating as far back as four to five years ago, we had budgeted the replacement of certain pieces of equipment, and in doing so, we funded those with capital leases. So the first element of our budget when we're putting the capital number together in this regard is what are we already committed to? So these are elements that we've already purchased, and we're in various phases of funding those, again, years one through five. We don't really have any capital leases that go beyond five years. Banks tend to increase rates substantially after five years, so that's, that's the sweet spot. Most importantly here is at the end of any of these capital leases, the township owns the piece of equipment. So we may take five years to pay for it, like a garbage truck, for example, but we're going to get much more than five years of use out of it. So after those lease payments are done, the vehicle is ours free and clear. Within the police department, I have two different categories here. I just wanted to touch on this, because this is something that we do as part of our evaluation of the budget system or budget development, long before it makes the public light of day. The requested are, are numbers that are included in the replacement plan, and they're reviewed during our budget meetings. And then ultimately, depending on where the operating numbers fall and what the general fund looks like, we start peeling back. And if you'll go back to my presentation, two weeks ago, the general fund was in a deficit, so we peeled back significantly and are, at this point, only including the most significant, or the most needed vehicles for replacement. So for police, those are the two hybrid explorers at the top of the list, and then the MDTs are critical. Those are the computer systems within the vehicles. Those have to be up-to-date and operating, so this is the replacement of five of those. So that's what's included for police. Similarly, on the Public Works side, a significant number of vehicles. Director Foster, a moment ago, was talking about, when he was talking about the mechanics and the workload that those gentlemen have, the amount of vehicles and equipment needed by our departments to offer the services we offer is extensive, and those various pieces of equipment do need replacing. So what we try to do is schedule that out on a, as level, annual level expense as possible, and that's what our spreadsheet aims to do. So the requested column, again, is the spreadsheet telling us, this vehicle is X number of years old and is in need of replacement, again, based on where the numbers are at for the general fund, to try to lessen the general fund's deficit situation as much as possible. We prioritized the five pieces of equipment included, ultimately, at the end of the day in the number. The numbers identified in the blue represent what we would be proposing as leases. So the garbage truck, for example, is a $350,000 piece of equipment, a five-year lease is roughly $82,000 for that. So to a much lesser scale, information technology, Fire Department, Parks and Recreation Department, ultimately what those, those different departments are requesting. ITs, some years are heavier than others, just based on the type of equipment needing replaced. For 2026, luckily, we don't have any battery backup systems or servers or storage systems that are necessary, which do carry a heavy cost. So this year, it's just our annual replacement program for computers, monitors, and laptops, which is relatively inexpensive. For Fire Department, it is a new vehicle to the fleet for the chief. Parks and Rec, as Tammy touched on during her presentation, the need to move all sorts of arts and crafts and supplies and equipment for the various programs and events. We, right now and for the past years, have used a Ford Expedition that I don't know how it's still running as of this day. It is, it is done, so that, that vehicle needs to be retired, and we're looking to replace it with an EV, Ford Transit, or something similar. Bonded projects. So these are the projects that have been funded through debt issuances over the past couple of years. Some of this is going to be review. I thought it was a good opportunity to remind both the board and the community that a lot has been done in the last decade on this front. Director Cohen talked about the park improvement projects that took place with the 2016 bonds. This is a brief summary of what that looked like. As she noted, Fenimore Woods is still ongoing. It's the only one left of this borrowing that still has money left to be spent. Then again, in 2019, bonds were issued. These bonds were aimed more at safety-related projects. We had, so within, again, most of these projects are done. We have the traffic adaptive signal improvements that are still, that are moving forward. The engineer had, or the board approved that legislation or project just a couple meetings ago, as well as the, all of the items that you see on this list have been completed over, since 2019. The Lancaster sidewalk improvements, from Barley Cone to Lowry's, we did spend some money on that, although I was having a hard time identifying that in my, in the capital spreadsheet I was looking at today. So I wanted to acknowledge the project, because it was a significant project. I just wasn't able to nail down the number this afternoon. So we'll get that updated before this, we publish this presentation. We also had North Wayne sidewalks in two different stretches that were improved over this time. And then going forward, a couple of projects that we've talked about in these meetings, the Clement Crone crosswalks, or crosswalk on Conestoga, the Wayne ADA ramp improvements, the left-turn phasing, as well as streetlight pole replacements along Lancaster. Then in 2024, the board authorized facility bonds, which are funding these various projects. As, as you would, as you would guess, by the recent issuance of the bonds, most of these projects are still ongoing. This is the work that Steve and his team, along with Tammy, Mr. Tate, Mr. Foster, are all working on together, just about every single day, moving these projects forward. And also, Mr. Wagner assisting Steve on the engineering side. But we have the energy improvements to this building in Public Works, along with the roof replacements, including the new solar-powered, or solar arrays for the solar power. We're also going to be resurfacing the Public Works area, I believe, within the next month or so, so that's moving forward quickly. And then, as the board is aware, earlier this year, the legislation adopted which allowed us to start imaging a lot of our document storage and start, starting to move those to an electronic format. Stormwater bonds, the older series that were issued back in 2022, these are all complete and was part of the presentation that Mr. Norsini and Mr. Tate gave the board earlier this year when we moved to the second round of funding. But these projects were all complete since 2022. And then we have a list of new projects that were presented to the board this summer, and these projects are on various stages of design and ready to move forward once the bonds are issued later this year or early next year. So just, just real quickly with that, I wanted to pause and just give a massive thanks and kudos to Steve Norsini, his team, or his, his team of Mr. Wagner and Dennis Capella, who is, who is going to retire on us, so it'll be one less in that department for a time, as well as Director Cohen, Director Foster, and Mr. Tate and his team. When we talk about the amount of projects, that list, I, hopefully I went through it faster than you would like, or slower than you would probably like, but it is a massive amount of projects for the size of our team. And the amount of work that they're able to pump out and stay on top of is extremely impressive. So what we get bogged down on a daily basis when we talk about projects is we get lost in unfunded projects and the frustrations associated with doing work on projects that don't move forward. Sometimes we lose sight of the fact that we, we have accomplished a lot, and there's a lot of projects and of a lot of investment we, as a township, have made back into the community over the last decade. And those few slides there summarize what's been done. So now, the, the real fun part of what we talk about when we, in the capital realm, is a growing list of projects that we've identified as unfunded, which just, it means there has not been a, a funding source identified per project. And really, what it means is we don't yet have a capital improvement program or plan that is necessary to start prioritizing these types of projects, which then leads you, leads the next phase of actually starting to funding, fund and move forward with them. A lot of the projects identified within these different categories are the replacement or maintenance of existing assets within our parks and trails and our facilities. Some are expansions of those spaces. It's just really a myriad of things that we have to do and things that are pressing versus things that, over time, we've identified as, hey, this would be really good and maybe something we should think about. So it is all in that donut. The good news is that there are a lot of different options in funding these things. It's not all just taxes. We have bonds, we can issue debt, we have liquid fuels that helps with our roads, we have park impact fees now that can help offset some of the park elements of this. We are very good at and fortunate to receive grant support with a lot of projects. We do have a lot of, or a handful of public-private partnerships, and we also have the sanitary sewer and stormwater fees that will help fund a significant portion of those two, which is about a third of that pie graph. So just a quick summary of some of the projects that exist within a spreadsheet that includes the 84-plus unique different locations and projects. Building street structures, Garrett Avenue and Lowry's Avenue, two bridge repairs that are necessary. We've been told by, I believe it's PennDOT or the county, that those two are in need of repair, base repair, and that they should be prioritized. We have a road over on Spring House, Spring House Road that is half-closed because of a failing wall. Road that is half-closed because of a failing wall. Crew center improvements, again, a public, public-private partnership where we have a RACP grant that is going to fund roughly 800,000 to 900,000 of those improvements, as well as some other improvements that I talked about in here, like township police department parking to include solar roof panels. Again, not something that we've talked about, but a good idea for something way down the road and something to think about. Pedestrian safety, something that comes up regularly in our communications with members of the board and the public, handful of sidewalk projects, crosswalks, ADA ramps, intersection improvements. Those different projects all exist within this spreadsheet. We also have parking, traffic and transportation projects. We have the North Wayne parking lot restoration, which was discussed a couple of years ago, and we were talking with Wayne Presbyterian Church about the North Wayne lot. Maplewood Mill Dam, the roadway and the, the spillway that lives underneath it, how is that going to move forward? That project lives in here. We have park improvements in two different categories. Again, Tammy did, or Ms. Cohen did a good job of highlighting all of the different parks, all of those park amenities. And within those parks, there is a schedule of various elements that need to be replaced or significantly maintained. This spreadsheet that we have may, houses all of that information, including sun structure, or sunshades at Clemecron Park, the walking path at Emlyn Tenel. Tammy and the Parks Board have, have spent the better part of the last three years meeting and working with the public about an Odericio Park Plan. We've also talked in various emails and communications about upgrading our parks with AEDs. All of those different conversations and plans are projects that have been identified and live within the spreadsheet. We also have trail improvements. So this is something that we've, that's come up several times, both in budget meetings. I think some trail folks reach out to commissioners directly. We have designed the Darby Paoli, AKA our Drossen Trails. So we have estimates built into the spreadsheet for what it costs to install those. We also have the Radnor Trail Extension, another project that has been designed, but just lacks the funding for the implementation of the actual improvements, as well as Radnor Tap Trail Sunshade. We have an agreement with Radnor Schools that one will be installed. We don't have a location or size or scope yet. That still needs to be figured out, but that project lives in this spreadsheet. So that's, that's a 10-minute overview of the 84-some projects. And then what typically happens right now is a commissioner will get a phone call or an email saying, hey, wouldn't it be great if this existed? And then usually, there's a conversation that happens between the commissioners and staff. This is where those projects go to live for, for now. And hopefully, as we continue the conversations forward about implementing a capital improvement plan, we could start getting into the regular installation of those improvements. So some of the key elements, best practices of a CIP, because we have to have an acronym in government. So the CIP would include a, a policy that provides the definitions. What are we talking about? Thresholds. What's going to be capitalized? What's too big? What's so small that it should just live in your operating budget? And that's not just the initial purchase, purchase. It's painting. This painting is, is that a capital improvement? Is it an operating improvement? So you define all those things within the policy. You establish your accounting policies, your funding options. You then assign funding to the different types of capital to make sure that you're matching the life of the improvement with whatever the funding is assigned to it, to make sure that you're not issuing 20-year bonds on a server that's going to last for two years. So within the policy, you define all those, those rules, as well as a scope or term. It's obviously needs to be multi-year, but what's the right mix? Three to five years is, is pretty short-term and hard to plan adequately for. 10 years is better, but you start, things start getting really blurry after six years. So what is years six, seven, eight, nine, 10 look like in that plan? Then you build within the policy document how you're going to evaluate and decision, make decisions on moving forward with projects, including incorporating into the budget process. The purpose, some of these are pretty self-explanatory, but it just, it, it gives the township order in, in terms of how it moves forward with capital decisions. And those are some bullet points that just provide a summary on how that happens. So for Radnor, a potential path forward is step one, establish a capital improvement plan policy. I think we could work, I think the, the business advisory committee is, is at least in the initial stages of, of taking a look at that. That's something that we can start putting pen to paper on. Then we formally adopt it, and what comes on the heels of that is some sort of funding mechanism, funding mechanisms, because it will be a combination of a lot of different factors. And then you start incorporating that into the annual budget. And this is something that I think, even if we started tomorrow, is a multi-year endeavor to get it up and running. And as time goes by, the scope can expand based on our, our capacity for funding and our capacity, quite honestly, as a staff to address projects. Because even if we had $63 million dropped on our lap tomorrow, with our staffing, we couldn't install those projects as quickly as I think most people would want, just because of our numbers. So the opportunities I feel like we have, we, we do have the Act 511 taxes, and this builds off of part of what I presented on two weeks ago. For able to lessen our reliance on that group for operations, those revenues are significant, anywhere from 14 to 16 million dollars. Obviously, not all of it for capital, but if we could start carving off some of it, especially in the good years, that can establish some immediate funds that you can deposit into a capital improvement program. You can then complement those funds with some sort of borrowing plan, plan being the, the operative word there. So right now, as, as presented, we've spent the last decade really relying solely on bonds to fund capital projects. I, I think an opportunity for us is to plan our borrowing when it's ideal in terms of the funding makeup, so that we're complementing the, the funding options with borrowing instead of relying solely on it. The flexibility in both of those options is that when revenues are good, we have more capital money and more opportunities to get projects done. When revenues struggle, this, a capital improvement plan can be modified quickly and easily by delaying projects and just shifting the, the schedule out a little bit until the revenues either recover or alternate funding sources identified. Again, we could start doing all that without impacting the township's operations on an annual basis. And at the end of the day, what all this is really aimed at is strengthening the township's financial position for the long term, help ease tax growth over time, make it more predictable, help to improve bond ratings, and help to ensure that the most expensive things we do or buy and install are planned for and executed in an efficient, cost-effective manner. So at the end of the day, that's really what a capital improvement plan is aiming to do. So thank you. That's a lot of presenting for tonight. I do appreciate the time. That's why I didn't get into all that two weeks ago, is I'm glad the agenda tonight worked out so that we could dig into it tonight, and I appreciate your time and allowing us to do that.
No, and we appreciate the explanations. Thank you very much. Questions for Mr. White? All right. Seeing none. We're going to move on to the initial public participation. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak, you could have five minutes. Just give your name and your street, and I'll give you one finger up when you have a minute left.
That's a good idea. I didn't bring a presentation. I just have some comments to
Those ones would have been hard to beat with their
Yeah, well, it gets me a little, something to shoot for. Good evening. My name is David Mackey. I'm not a resident of this township. I've been in Trudifern for the last 30 years, where I grew up and moved back to about 32 years ago. I've been on the municipal board there and some other historical boards, and I lived in Chesterbrook, Wayne, for the last 30 years and recently moved downsized to Devon. I've been a small business owner in Wayne for the last five years. Five years ago this summer, I purchased the Philadelphia Print Shop that had been in Chestnut Hill for 38 years. It was closed and shuttered because of the, the owner's health issues. I bought the business as COVID ramped up without knowing how long that might last. We moved, which was quite a feat, from Chestnut Hill, after the 38 years of collections, to the rear of the Old State Store, 209 West Lancaster Avenue, where Nest is located now. It was a nine-month lease, a temporary lease, and we knew that. At the time, we designed, permitted and installed a sign that was reviewed by the DRB. And nine months later, when we moved to 106 East Lancaster Avenue, below where the card shop is now, I signed a new five-year lease with CAS Holloway to lease the lower level, which only had an entrance from the sidewalk on Lancaster Avenue, as well as a more complete ADA entrance on School Lane in the back, where we relocated the sign that was at 209 to the rear of 106, where it's been for the last four and a half years. I mentioned COVID. Not only was that a challenge, but it was a downstairs space with limited visibility. And I was able, after some time, to renegotiate the lease with CAS, which was not an easy task. In that renegotiation, I was able to lower the rent a couple of years ago, and to negotiate the right to terminate the lease early. Earlier this year, in March, I terminated the lease early, one year early, effective 8/31. A week later, oh, we had announced at that time that we were going to close the business permanently and move to an online model. I didn't know how to do that or where to do that, or, because you still have to keep the, the product somewhere. We were in 2,400 square feet in CAS's lower level. He did sell the building to an investor, say, two years ago this December. So this spring, I terminated the lease, had planned to close and go online, and a week later, I stopped into the antiquity store near At the Table, which had been there for 22 years. The woman who you may know was very nice. She used to refer people to us, and as a courtesy to her, I went in to tell her that we were going to close the business this summer. She reported, or advised me then that she was going to close there after 22 years. She gave me the name of the owner, Tony Pinaccio, who the public records show his family has owned the building since 1910. I think they ran a mainline auto parts or NAPA there for 70 years and three generations. During that time, he did a little to improve the building. As part of my discussions and lease negotiations with him, I was able to make a requirement that he would power wash and, and, and replace the, power wash the building, the brick, and replace the roof. He actually only agreed to replace the roof, so I contributed to help him power wash the building. You ought to see it now. If you haven't been by there, it's the, there's five storefronts, including At the Table. And that was renovated a couple of years ago, but this building and space has never looked better. I'm a commercial real estate professional for 40 years. Commercial real estate leasing at one minute? Wow. And of course, I had to fill out an application to erect or relocate the sign that had been at two locations to my new premises. I submitted that on time, August 20th, for the September 10th meeting. I missed the September 10th meeting because I was caught up in the move. There was an email or memo that came out that day, a different interpretation of the sign code. And I had to go, come back at the next meeting. At the next meeting, I think it was September, I'm sorry, October 10th, or October 8th, the design review board approved my sign three to nothing, with the condition that I have, may have to go to the zoning hearing board for an interpretation or a further review. And then I was advised by Mr. Norsini last week by letter that I needed to go before the zoning hearing board. All I'm trying to do is to relocate my existing sign that I've had in two locations within the WBOD for five years. I'm a small business. I spent $10,000 to move. I never would have moved and signed a new lease to relocate within the WBOD. If I ever thought there'd be a problem relocating my approved existing sign, where a sign had been in at the antiquity store and falling apart, albeit for 22 years. All I'm asking for is appreciate your consideration. If you haven't been, seen my store, I would welcome you to. I'll just make one more point, please. Remarkably, ironically, last Wednesday, the WBA, which I'm an active member of for the last five years, came out to do a ribbon cutting at my new space, which we opened October 1st, and my five-year anniversary in Wayne. Then I had to turn around and go back afterwards and spend several thousand dollars to submit a zoning hearing board application to be heard on November 20th. I've just asked for your consideration of those facts. And if you haven't seen our beautiful new gallery, I would encourage you to do it anytime. We're open Tuesday through Saturday, and the building has never looked better. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for the invitation. Any further public participation?
Yes. Hello, I'm Mark Danick. I'm an attorney. I represent Joe Schumacher, 607 South Valley Forge. His property and project has been listed in the current bond issue for the stormwater projects for the upcoming year. Mr. Schumacher just, you know, wants to express his desire that the project be completed in 2026. My understanding is that the project has already been designed and is just waiting funding. So he just respectfully requests that the Board of Commissioners issue the bond and get the project funded. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have to make a quick note. Sorry. Any further public participation? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item that Commissioner or member of the public would like to pull from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Mulrooney in a second. Second. I'm going to call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous. We'll move on to the business agenda. Item 3A.
Madam President, can I, can I just ask one question?
Yes, please.
Steve, before we go too far, can, can you just clarify the, the issue? How did, how did the small business owner have two signs approved, and then on the third occasion, have a different interpretation?
So Commissioner, I can't speak to the previous interpretations, but we met internally, and the ordinance reads very clearly. The square footage of sign you get per lineal foot of width of your building. We went over it, I went over it with staff internally, and as the gentleman noted, the design review board approved his sign pending zoning review. That zoning review took place with myself and the solicitor, and that interpretation of the zoning ordinance that I just noted to you is very clear. I informed the design review board of that, as well as the applicant. So I can't speak to why there was a sign or signs in the past that have been approved under a different standard. I know not all have, but some have. But as it reads, that was noted to the design review board as well as that resident. And as we've discussed, I'll be attending the next design review board, talk to Commissioner, to President, to McAntonio. The best way to deal with this is to change the ordinance, and they're going to work on that, and I'll help them work on that, along with the solicitor.
So over the last five years, are there different people involved in the interpretation process?
I don't know the makeup of the design review board. I know Mr. President DeMecan Antonio has been on there for some time, but I don't know the makeup for the last
But it was, it was the township's interpretation based on the gentleman's comments, right?
No, Jake.
No.
This has been, this has been going on, that interpretation from the DRB has been going on for two or three years. Kevin and I thought we fixed it, but they approved the sign, and it's pretty clear. If you look at the code, it depends on the length of the building. And that gives you the square footage, and it's a simple calculation. But DRB approved it despite that, subject to a zoning review, which Steve and I did, and then Steve wrote the letter. So it, it wasn't like he had an approved sign and he was just moving it. That sign that he had approved was a different building, different size building. So So, I mean, we're working on getting the DRB sort of up to date with that particular section. I think there was some history going back 10 years, 15 years, where things were interpreted a certain way, so we're trying to correct it again. Yeah.
Item 3A, the appointment of Melissa Zaffin to the Environmental Advisory Council for a partial term ending December 31st, 2027.
With enthusiasm.
Oh, good. Could I have a motion, please? Thank you, with enthusiasm, Commissioner Agnew. And a second. All right, and any discussion? No? Any public participation? Seeing none, I'm going to call a vote on item 3A, the appointment of Melissa Zaffin to the EAC. All in favor? Aye. Item 3B, ordinance 2025-09, this is an adoption amending Section 263-8 of Chapter 263 of the Radnor Township Code, Trees, to clarify when a clearing permit is required. It establishes additional requirements for tree removal and sets an effective date. Mr. Foster, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, please. This was before you as an introduction, probably about a month ago, and Mr. Gibbons had spoke to it as the reason why Shade Tree wanted to change the ordinance. So Mr. Gibbons had to step away, but we have Mr. Paris, who can answer any questions if you have them as to the reason why this again is still here.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve ordinance 2025-09?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Mulrooney, and a second. Second by Commissioner Riley. Any discussion? We did have this about a month ago. Happy? Yeah? Okay. Any public participation on this issue? All right, seeing none, I'm going to call the vote on ordinance 2025-09. All in favor? Aye. Unanimous, with Commissioner Abel off the podium. Item 3C, Resolution 2025-153, authorizing to purchase government experience engagement cloud essentials from Granicus for $21,020.99, with a one-time setup and training fee of $3,160.50 to be funded from the general fund. The annual subscription addition is an outcome-focused solution to reach constituents, leverage community feedback, increase enrollment, and adoption of programs. Molly, you want to start us?
I can take that, Commissioner, or Mr. White.
Okay, all right. I don't know, I'm looking everywhere.
Seek and you shall find. So here we are, and I have to thank Ms. Gallagher for writing that up. So this is actually a very exciting item that we're looking to purchase and requesting to purchase. So this site would house all our projects, up to 10 a year. But it's more than just a project site. Ms. Gallagher had noted to receive community input. So if you look, if you, the way this would work is, we could put up a project that you are thinking about, not that you've approved, that you're thinking about, and we would get feedback from our residents. And we would judge the sentiment in the texts, right, to get an idea of positive, negative, or neutral. I thank you, Ian, I was going to ask for that. So this is a real, just a look, and if, and if you can see in the top middle, the first project we would put on here is the comprehensive plan. This is perfect for that. But it's perfect for a lot of other projects, too. So whether it's something mundane, like a stormwater project that we might be going through, right, it would still go up, people could track it, people could ask questions, people could talk about it. Mr. White just presented a $63 million unfunded capital budget, plan. Conceivably, you could put a project or projects up, and that is a way to get the feedback from our residents, right? And again, we would be able to judge sentiment, we could take polls, there's analytics, there's qualitative and quantitative data that we can get from this. The capital plan, or the comprehensive plan, is perfect for something like this, right? Because you approve the comprehensive plan, well, now it's implementation time. And part of that implementation is changing the zoning ordinance, which is going to take, you know, hearings, but also you can get information from your residents and your constituents on that. So this is a really good product. We're excited about it. I know the manager's excited about it. I am, Kevin is, and Molly. We will all be excited about it if the board approves this, because it's really a lot of tools. And if you read the memo, it's heavy on getting information from our residents, getting that data, and allowing staff and the board to make educated decisions on things with input from our residents, right, not just from us. And we would roll this out, we would make sure people understand it. It's a six-to-nine-month rollout for this project. If the board did approve it tonight, Ms. Gallagher told me that literally the company would start this week before we get any payments rolling or anything like that, which would be great, because that would, you know, the comp plan, the zoning, that's all going to get started soon. This would be great also for the Wayne Business Master Plan, right, a perfect project to go up on here. So there's a lot of the larger planning projects, but this also would work with a parks project, infrastructure, all the different things that Mr. White laid out. 10 projects a year, first five, they do for us to train us, and then from there on, we would be able to take care of that ourselves. So we're respectfully requesting to obtain this along, it's not just the product, the annual subscription, but also the implementation and setup.
Thank you. Could I get a motion to approve Resolution 2025-153?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Mulrooney, and a second. Second by Commissioner Riley. Any questions or comments for Mr. Norsini or Ms. Gallagher?
Yeah, I do have. So how does this platform integrate with our website? Molly, that's probably best for you.
Yes, good evening, good evening. So currently, every department has their projects listed on their subpage. So as a user, you would have to go to the specific department to read and learn further about each project, and that takes a lot of intuitive knowledge on the part of the user. This would remove current projects on radnor.com and put them in one centralized hub. So our residents, our business owners, whomever are looking for project updates, could go directly to the Engagement HQ. We would brand it to something more specific to Radnor, but they would go to one centralized hub to find all project information.
So it's not embedded in our website?
It will be linked, it will feel like one experience, but it will, it will have the experience, it will, yes, it will be linked to our website on the front end, and it will feel cohesive. On the back end, it will be two separate products for us, that we're managing as staff.
Understood. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
I have, no, go ahead. I have not an objection to this, but I guess I have a comment to bear in mind as we go forward, more to myself maybe than anybody else. As, as things stand at the, at the meeting level, when we get feedback from the public, there is a barrier to entry, which is you've got to be willing to come out at night at 6:30 PM and give a comment. And that's sort of detrimental to the small D democracy, because we're keeping people out of the process. But it's also really useful to me, because when I see five people come out and comment on a project, or 10 people come out and comment on a project, I have sort of a multiplier in my head, those 10 people represent 100 people each in the township. And it's just that the other, oh gosh, I have to do math, 490 people are not there because they weren't able to get out that night, but there's probably a bunch of other people who feel the same way. That same force multiplier doesn't really exist when you have this kind of a system where you can just hop on your computer. It's a whole lot easier to send an email chain around. Instead, now the barrier to entry is, do you know about the website? Do you have a friend who is bugging you to send something in, or a group that's bugging you to send something in? And I don't have confidence that we're going to get people who have engaged with the issue in the same way. We're going to get people who had just kind of got an email forward, and a friend says, please click here, because I don't like this in my neighborhood. They don't know what's really being proposed necessarily, they just end up signing on because a friend asks them to. Or there's a small collection of people who have the information, a small group of people sign up to say, we don't like this, but because the information didn't filter out to a larger group, because these small groups just weren't in the right social network, it seems like there's a small number of people who are involved, because I'm not using the force multiplier in my head anymore. But in reality, there's a much larger group of people out there who just never got the information. So I am interested to see, as we move forward, how this changes the vernacular of meetings. I don't really have an answer, but as you guys kind of get thoughts, I'd be interested in your feedback.
Yeah, interesting.
Yeah, I guess, just sort of piggybacking on what Commissioner Larkin said, is there any sort of like vetting or controls? Like, you know, when it's public comment here, you must be a resident or doing business in our township, you know, with some, some loose controls on that, but we're here and we could stop somebody from speaking if they were from California and wanted to talk about their stormwater management. You know, we really can kind of keep the scope to our residents, our business owners, you know, speaking on issues that impact us in this community only. So I'm wondering if there, you know, does a person have to sign in and, you know, tell you whether they're a Radnor resident or not? Those types of things, I think, might be useful to understand.
So while I haven't asked those questions of this particular product, in working with Granicus for the past six years, I know with the Radnor 401 Connect app, all of those systems are in place, those controls. So it leads me to believe this product would have the similar controls in place. They also are very good about 24/7 monitoring for safety, language, violence, et cetera. I can ask those questions about Engagement HQ and get back to you tomorrow, if that's okay? Okay.
In addition, like, along that same idea, say, Commissioner Mulrooney has a great project for her, you know, for the fifth ward, and someone in a different ward's like, I don't like it. Well, it doesn't really affect them, so how do we regulate that? Like, I want it, I want my ward thing to go first, so we get everybody to like, oh, no, don't do Commissioner Mulrooney's. So how does that, how do we regulate that on that, for this program?
So for the price point we're looking at, we have a limited number of projects. So I think it would come down to department heads and what they felt was priority to communicate to the township. However, there is an unlimited package, which, with a different price point. I would leave that, maybe, Steve, if you want to chime in, on how we would manage which projects get priority?
So really, the projects get priority from the Board of Commissioners, right? We come to you as staff, and we may recommend a project, and we say, this would be a project we would like to do. And it's at the board's grace that we can do that project. So Mr. White presented stormwater manager, stormwater and stormwater management projects we'd like to do in a bond issue from the stormwater that would be funded by the Stormwater Fund. We come to you requesting those projects. We bring to you other projects, whether it be pedestrian safety, or culverts, or pump stations, all sorts of good things, as well as the board suggests to us to investigate projects. So our job is to be a conduit and bring these to you, or you bring them to us, we flush them out and bring them back to you. But ultimately, it's going to come from the board, what projects we would, just like with anything, what is approved? And if it's approved, we put it out that you've given me permission to go to bid, right? That's now going to be a project that can go up on the list.
This isn't, so the, so this is like a direct messaging, right? So the, the resident who has something to say about a project that's posted, they make a comment, it comes to staff. It's not like the public can then see everybody's commenting on it, and you all take it with whatever grain of salt you take, all emails and phone calls and all of that. You're taking in information through this platform, but it's not broadcast. Is that right?
So, Madam President, if I could, just, I think, within this system, not I think, within this system, we have the capability to, we can have projects where we invite public comment. There's other projects where, having a hard time coming up with an example, but it's something we're doing. You know, whether you like it or not, we have to do it, and we're going to do it. Where we can not invite public comment and just provide very detailed information about what's about to happen. The, the question that, that Ms. Gallagher has to get the answer to on how we restrict who is sending what messages in, I do know that the system does have the mapping feature. It's all, there is the GIS element built into this, so it is, it is spatially accurate. Now, one thing that we've always tried to balance is, we want to invite public comment, and we want to invite participation. The best way to really nail that down is to make everyone create an account with your full information of who you are and where you're commenting from. But the balance of being open and we want your comment, those two really conflict with each other. So it's, it's trying to find that sweet spot between those two things. I don't have a solid black and white answer for you right now. I think there is going to be some on-the-fly learning based on the projects we put out there. As Mr. Norsini put, or mentioned, the first, the first project we intend to load into this and put out publicly is the implementation of the various elements of the comp plan. Within that, there are things that are cons, are concepts, their, their ideas, their thoughts, their, so I'm guessing that we're going to want some feedback before we start hard-charging on any of those versus other elements of the comp plan that we've already done or are doing. And on those, probably not as much public comment. So I, there's, I think there's some learning that's going to take place once we get this up and running on exactly how those different things interact and where we like the balance.
So for things that are not the comp plan, projects, infrastructure, et cetera, that's some, they go up there because we have voted on it already. They don't go up there like, we're thinking of doing this, give me your feedback, right?
Yeah, so, let's use an example of, there's, there's maybe property in the township that's up for sale, and the township's considering to buy it for open space. And we want it, what does the community feel about that? That might be one where we open it up and we, we use this system to get just another element of public outreach. Obviously, this isn't going to replace, you know, the work that you do as commissioners, getting out to your neighborhoods, or the more traditional knocking on door method of getting input. But it's another tool, to Commissioner Larkin's point, that is accessible to people. So under this example, we would, might open that up. What do you think? This property, this is what it's going to cost, this is what we would use it for. And that, that might be more of an online, open conversation where we get to see what people are actually thinking, almost like a blog type of environment. So that, that's one example of the potential use.
Is the $21,020.99 an annual fee?
Yes.
Oh.
So that's not just setup? The one-time setup and training is the additional $3,160.
Yeah, it, embedded in these numbers is, it's, because of the public outreach element of this system, there is an offset to what we're paying Granicus now for the existing...
Agenda, et cetera?
No, the agenda lives by itself. That one's untouched by this. It's, it's the outreach that exists within what we have, the offering we have now, a few thousand dollars.
It's $6,500.
$6,500. So that would, the $21,000 would be net.
Correct.
Yeah. So there is an offset.
And this contract's for a year?
Yes.
And you have to renew it every year?
Correct.
Not, not dissimilar from our, our 401 Radnor Connect program that we have, as well as the Open Finance program that we have.
Are those the same vendor? Because I know they're our board management portal, too.
Yeah, the Radnor, sorry, I'm, these are all answers that Molly has, too, but, the Radnor Connect is, the Open Finance is actually a subcontractor from the Munis Financial Software, Socrata or Socrata, that's, that's who hosts the Open Finance piece. But that, the look and feel is that of the website, which is Granicus.
So, I don't want to be the only one saying, I'm, I'm struggling with this because, you know, the, the one piece that you, you showed, the static image, like, I'm, I'm not seeing value of this beyond what we could do on a website. You know, you can always embed, you know, a widget that allows you to take comments, you can... you can embed a link to a survey, and you can use a free survey tool for that. So I'm just not quite understanding, I'm not dismissing it, but I think I would have trouble voting for it tonight, just because I don't fully understand the platform.
We'll come back with a full presentation.
I make a motion to table?
There's a motion to table Resolution 2025-153 and a second. All in favor? Aye. Now that it's tabled, I won't ask for public participation, we can get it next time. All right, we're moving on to item 3D, Ordinance 2025-10. This is an item we heard about at the last meeting that would be up for adoption, had been advertised for this public meeting, but I'm going to make a motion to table this. Ordinance 2025-10, because there's ongoing sort of negotiation about it. Could I have a second, please? Second by Commissioner Larkin. Any public participation? I'll table. Seeing, well, I don't know, you might want to get your word in. Seeing none, I'll call a vote on tabling Ordinance 2025-10. All in favor? Aye. Aye? It's unanimous. That's the end of our business agenda. Next item is reports of board liaisons. Anybody?
Well, we've added a new person on the E A C.
Just now, hot off the press. Okay. Any new business? Any old business? Any final public participation? Seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? And all in favor? Aye. We're adjourned.